Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every name and every soul.
Obviously we have to sing. Obviously we have to sing in my country too.
Mr. Basil, would you do the roll call please? Mr. Basil here, Mrs. Bites?
Here.
Mr. Doty?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rathgen?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Ms. Renowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here. Other announcements, I have a couple announcements. I would just like to remind everybody that tomorrow is Veterans Day. And I think we owe Veterans Day our way of life, so do everything you can to remember them, please. In the back of the room is the Peace Poster Contest winner as selected by the Lions Club. So you might want to look at that as you circulate the room later on. There'll be a special voting meeting following the committee of the whole meeting. And there will also be a brief executive session following the meeting to discuss some personnel and negotiation issues. Are there any agenda edits? Seeing none, I'm going to forego the public comment portion since I don't see any members of the public here. So with that, Mrs. Torshia?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. I just have a few remarks for this evening. First, I'd like to thank BCTC for a wonderful dinner and tour of the facility. It was absolutely an amazing meal prepared for us by the students. And it was very interesting to see the health occupations cluster and to see what our students are involved with. So thank you to BCTC. On Daniel Boone Homesite note, I would like to extend congratulations to Savannah Toth and Rebecca Slattery for being honored this month for their selection to the All-State 2014 Softball Team at the Fall Sports Program held last week. It was, I got to present them their awards. It was amazing what these two young ladies had done in their softball career as juniors. The amount of, their batting average, the amount of strikeouts, it was just truly amazing what these two girls have accomplished. I can only imagine what they'll do as seniors. This weekend, I attended a photography contest where we had nine students who entered 33 different photos into a contest. And on behalf of Maddie Loomis, I had accepted her award of honorable mention. There were two honorable mentions, a first, a second, and a third place. And Maddie, she entered this photograph, which was called Blown Away. And she was the first honorable mention. So I'm going to give this then to Mr. Henkel to take back to school and congratulate Maddie on her photograph. But it was quite interesting, the amount of work that went into the photography, the amount of students and their dedication. Like I said, we had 33 entries out of 109, which was quite amazing. So congratulations to all those students. I'd like to give a little plug for our football team again. They won their first game at district playoffs. They beat Lampeter Strasburg Friday night. It was quite cold. We had a nice attendance. The pep band was there. Cheerleaders were there even though they were freezing. But it was, it was a great game. And we won, we're moving on. We play at Milton Hershey this Friday night, so please come out and support the football team. I also had the opportunity to watch Abby Snyder, 12th grader at the high school, compete in states cross-country. She placed 65th out of 200 AAA students or athletes. And Abby achieved her personal best at that race, so I wanted to mention Abby. And on a side note, something that doesn't have, unrelated to student accomplishments, Mr. Martino and I met with the transportation companies last week regarding the parent concern about children riding buses who have allergies and require an EpiPen in the event that they have an allergic reaction. And unfortunately, after the bus drivers were very willing and receptive to hear what we were recommending, but they had to consult their insurance providers. And their insurance providers told them that they should not engage their drivers in EpiPen administration or CPR or any other kind of first aid, that there would be some type of liability issue. So I will reach out to that parent who did come to the podium with her concern to let her know that it's a little bit larger than just the fact that, you know, people weren't willing to do it. We were more than willing to have the drivers trained, but it comes down to some liability. Next week, we will be celebrating American Education Week in our schools. Many of the schools have things going on. I believe that the board had received an invitation to participate in some way within our elementary building. So, you know, please let me know if you need any type of support with that. Certainly reach out to the building principals. It should be an exciting week. And next, I would like to move on and introduce Mr. Tom Kirchner, our Berksford Vocational Technical School Authority representative. Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you. Don't bother, I'll sit down.
No, please.
Mr. Kirchner, let me say how glad we are to have you come here because everybody's heard your name and we've all been waiting to see who you are.
Okay, just a point of, my name doesn't have an S in it here.
I'm sorry.
K-I-R-C-H-A-N. Well, I am a Daniel Boone School Board Representative to the First County Vocational Authority. Let me talk about the authority. The authority basically right now is sort of a state of limbo. The authority is there to go out and, when all school districts decide they want to do a project, that's not us. If a school district said they want to get a project, they need money. So they'll come to us and we'll talk to the bond council and the lawyers and everybody and everybody. Who gets their $10 out of it? We'll discuss with them and finally we'll come up with a way of financing maybe a million or $2 million that the VOTAC might need. That is about, that is about 10 years ago. And the board is active and it's held still active. I think because the school authority, technically speaking, owns the buildings. You know, responsible for the pain or the debt to the buildings and just like that. So I think they want to be sure we meet it once a year so that they don't even say that everything is chitchepechy and that everything's going awry. So we do meet only once a year. And that's in here, in this room. And one of the perks of the vowing is we had to get a dinner out of it. And I understand you have one tonight. We had one too made by the students and it's very good. So that's once a year we get that. And there's one representative from each school district in this, in the authority. We don't consider too much heavy stuff except when, you know, when we have to go out and get a rate, get a monitor or something like that. We have to maintain that the VOTAC is paying the rental and things like that, that the school district is in good shape financially. So that's really basically what we're doing on the authority. We have a meeting coming up, actually it's coming Wednesday in this room. And I think we'll pretty much follow the same pattern we had before. As far as myself goes, I live in Amity Township. I've lived there for 40 years. I was a school board member from 1975 to 1981. And after that, six years, that was the length of the term, actually, six years. Since then, I've cut it down to four years because some groups didn't want to pay a school director and they weren't doing their job, doing what they wanted. And I belong to various community activities. The Greater Berks Chamber Commerce Industry, I go to their breakfast meetings and some of their other activities. I belong to the, I liked it older in Amity Township. A very active member of the Danes with Optimus, called the Douglas Hill. We provide several thousands of dollars to students to receive scholarships or just outright gifts for, to do things with. Class Spark Board, we bought one of the Spark Boys for the high school a couple of years ago and, you know, talk them about different things. So that's pretty much what I wanted to cover about the school authority and about my background. I don't think I have any questions, do I ask more?
Mr. Kirchner, I think the last time I met you was the last time we had you in front of the board to sort of explain what the position was a number of years ago. And I was just kind of curious, do you guys typically meet every November? Do you once, one time a year? Would it be possible, have you come back after those meetings to attend one of our board meetings just to keep the board fresh and apprised of what it is you guys do and you're discussing? Just because I think as boards turn over, we, you know, people who have had the opportunity to meet you understand what it is that the authority does, you know, don't know. And that history is lost when the board turns over.
We don't actually get the minutes for this year's meeting until year.
Right, right.
I can certainly, I have to be, but sure, I can agree to that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm not sure you'll find anything exciting.
You know what, if anything else, it just keeps the board in touch with, you know, the different capacities, because obviously the board points its representative correct. So at the very least, we know we have somebody out there who's advocating for Daniel Boone.
What do you want me to come, next meeting or?
I don't think you need to come the next meeting because the whole board's here. But I think, you know, I mean, unless there's some new business to discuss. If there's nothing, then I would just say every year, if we could just kind of put that on the calendar to invite Mr. Kirchner to our, let's say, November voting meeting so that...
I think we have a three-year appointment, I think I can.
You can come to any board meeting you like. We welcome your...
I think that's the general.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, well, after this meeting, I'll call on...
Mrs. Prin, yep. Perfect. Absolutely.
Happy Christmas morning.
That's right.
That will be fine.
Okay, any questions, any questions? They say that we're not handling a lot of money on a month-to-month basis. That's all done by, you know, the loans are made, we're paying the law now and that. We kind of keep tabs of the pay laws. But outside of that, we don't, somebody can't come in and say, "Give me $100,000." Sure, why not?
Are there 16 board members?
There's one preschool district.
One preschool district?
Yeah. And some show up, it's hard to tell how many want to be here.
Right.
Each school district has allowed one to be there. I get Reggie and Yorah, they're not coordinated. They have their own VOTAC. Any others? Well, I've seen around for a little while, but Eagles started here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mrs. Bites, is there a Blazer Foundation update?
Yes, our meeting in October, at our meeting, they revised the 14-15 budget. They approved the 14-15 budget with revisions. We've got an update on the 25 Days of Christmas raffle, which is doing well. There was discussion on what the schools are planning to do with their proceeds. They approved a $5,000 purchase for the Founts and Pennell Level Literacy Intervention System. Small group supplementary intervention for students finding reading and writing difficult. There'll be no meeting in November, their next meeting is December. We spent a lot of time brainstorming about doing more the work of the foundation through committees and what we can do for community outreach to raise awareness about what the foundation is and what an education foundation is in general and how it is distinctly different from the school district. So they're working on their mission and their identity still to, you know, to better, to massage that a little bit. And they're hoping to do that through the committees that they're forming.
Thank you, Mrs. Prin. Mr. Hurley?
Mr. Kurtz?
I'm probably going to split up here because I'm going to put the projector on here.
Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Martino, we're going to go down the back end now. Or wherever you want to go.
Three, we'll take a push.
I'm kidding, okay. Yeah. I'm just kidding, okay. Yeah, really.
Should I pass the thing? Are they the same?
You're counting them?
Yes, I wouldn't count them.
Is it all the same? The whole long mission. And the one that brings you into, oh, this is old. This is about...
You want the lights in?
Oh, we can.
Mr. Martino can probably flick us a switch.
Wrong one.
Wrong, wrong one.
Wrong half of the room. Nope?
Guys, there's a board member, you've obviously asked him this 100 times. Mary Beth asks me to talk to you tonight alone about Act 82. Act 82 is basically about teacher effectiveness and changing the way we are evaluating our teachers. Because of Act 82, there's been several different things that we're doing differently administratively. And I want to bring this to the board's attention. Previously, if you look at how we evaluated teachers in school systems, what we did is we evaluated our teachers by what they did in the classroom and what we observed they did in the classroom. As a result of Act 82, and what you really need to know is that we are now not only evaluating teachers by what they did in the classroom, we are also evaluating teachers by the results that they get with their students. So by not only the processes, but also the results. And that is the essence of Act 82. If you look up at this pie chart and also the board members have a copy of it, you can see there is still a 50% proportion of the evaluation by what the principal sees in the classroom. And this is basically good instruction. We talk about, up here it says the Danielson's Framework. What they're talking about is how we evaluate teachers. We do it by evaluate their planning and preparation, their classroom environment, their instruction, and do they meet the professional responsibilities? Under the Danielson model, it is more rigorous. The rubric that we use to evaluate the teachers has allowed us to differentiate in a much more thorough way than we have in the past. But still 50% of the evaluation is that area. The biggest change we've seen under Act 82 is this part of the pie. Another 50% of their evaluation is based upon student performance. Are the students actually learning? Not just are we teaching, but are they getting it? If you look right here, the blue portion of the pie is the school building data. That's 15% of the teacher's evaluation. The 15%, that is basically the SPP score. For those of you who were at the curriculum meeting when I did the presentation on that, every teacher has 15% of their evaluation based upon that. So if it was 83.6, 50% of their evaluation would be that score. And that's basically all those metrics in there. The next 15% of teacher's specific data, what that is, is this. Primarily what you're going to see, the biggest chunk of this is going to be what we call P-VAS data. Right now, we only have one year of P-VAS data. Eventually, we're going to get three years of P-VAS data. What P-VAS is, is student growth. Students come in at a certain point. When you teach that student, at the end of the year, did they grow? In essence, did they make a year's worth of growth? A teacher is then going to be evaluated and their performance is going to be evaluated on that. Teachers just got their first P-VAS data they ever have a couple of weeks ago. When we get three years of that data, that then becomes part of this evaluation. There are also some other pieces that can, depending on the data and if it's available for that student, that can be included. You can include IEP progress, you can include PSAs. It depends on whether that data is available for particular teachers.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is that other data, is it optional to include it or is it required to include it if it's part of the student?
If, if it is available. Not all data is available for all teachers and all students. It depends on what subject they're teaching, whether data is available or not.
But if it is, it has to be included?
It should be included, yes, that's accurate. An example, if I can give you an example, a social studies teacher, that is not measured by anything, okay? So that would not be included. You certainly couldn't get P-VAS data from that because it's not a tested subject, unfortunately, in the state of Pennsylvania. So that would be an example of where you wouldn't. Down at the bottom here, you can see the elective data. And this is where several of you have questions about SLOs.
Actually, can you back up for a second? So what happens to that teacher that teaches social studies? How are they being evaluated? I mean, are you splitting the difference then on school data and elective data? Or does the observation and practice take up the other 15%?
It's a fair question. What happens is this, the elective data and this come together in essence. Those two, the SLO becomes a larger portion for that teacher.
I see.
Fair question. And it does get complicated depending on the subject area that you're talking about.
Mr. Hurley, what other, what other subjects are not?
I can give you some examples. An example, art is not evaluated, phys ed is not evaluated. Almost all of your minor subject areas, they're called encore subject areas, they're not evaluated.
Spanish, your language, all languages.
Spanish, foreign languages are not evaluated.
But most of the core subjects?
The major subjects, you're seeing them, your reading is evaluated, your math is evaluated. Your science isn't evaluated every year, it's evaluated every so many years.
High con?
What's that?
High con?
PDE regulation.
Really?
Yeah, we don't have an option. It should be, it should be evaluated every year. We'd love to have those data points to use for targeting students also.
What, we can't do that? You're saying we can't evaluate those subjects?
We do. If you're talking about internally, one of the things we're doing internally is we're trying to develop common assessments for common courses so that we have those metrics to use to help our, help our teachers improve instruction and also to remediate and enrich students depending on their individual circumstances and how they do. So that's a work in progress for us. We're trying to create our own internal metrics. Yes.
A teacher who does not have, or those metrics are not measured, for example, an encore teacher, how does that affect the effectiveness, evaluation for that teacher?
If they, what they're going to do is they're going to be, if, wait, if you take a look down here in the elective data, they're creating something called an SLO, okay? And basically what they're doing is they're, we're creating our own, we're creating our own metrics internally to address them and whether their students are achieving. So for, an example might be, the seventh grade art teachers might get together and they would create an SLO, which is basically what they're doing is they're creating their own assessment together. And then they're going to measure the student's performance on that assessment. And that'll be included right there in the elective data.
Do you have the teachers who are teaching more traditional, I don't know, traditional, but art, and not using, sorry, reading, writing, math, those subjects, they're using state tests to determine that.
We have to prove it.
But the electives, they're using kind of self-design tests? Is that accurate?
Well, and it depends on the pie. You're going to get into a complicated question. It depends, every teacher is doing an SLO also, okay? However, if there is not state data, this SLO is a larger portion of the pie. Those two come together. Okay, so in art teacher, what you're going to see is the SLO is this color and this color together. Whereas if you are a reading teacher, you would be, you are state assessed. So what you have is your SLO would be this part right here and you would have your state assessed data up here.
Rob, you need to let them know that the student, the SLO has to be approved by the building administrator before it can go ahead and be adopted.
Yep, and that's exactly correct. One of the things, the teachers work collaboratively with the administrator in terms of creating these SLOs. The teachers create SLOs in partnership with others, but the principal has to approve it so that they're reasonable and the SLOs are reasonably challenging for the students themselves. So it's all done collectively together. It doesn't get by the principal though, and then they have to approve it.
Mr. Hurley, this is too new to have any kind of track record, correct?
This is virtually brand new. Last year was the first time we began.
This can be modified as it goes along.
Could be, yeah.
We see the pros and cons of it.
PDE changes things fairly regularly. They just changed something in November or last month almost.
According to what we learned today by a lawyer from Fox Rothschild, this is not going to go away anytime soon. And it's not perfect in the way that you do evaluate teachers. Because Charlotte Danielson never meant for her, her program or her ideas to be used at the end of the day to really evaluate a teacher, to be unsatisfactory, satisfactory, et cetera. It really was meant to be a way of helping a teacher grow and for them to work together. Department of Education decided to adopt this. So they are tweaking things as they're going along. There are different growth points that get put into it. That's why it took so long for the data to be open to the public because they were tweaking things as they went. Sorry, Rob.
Absolutely. I have another follow-up question. So it seems to me that for a lot of these courses, a critical piece of this, what weight does the SLO have in the overall elective data percentage? You said up above and the other one, the P-VAS has a big, is it a big?
The SLO is the 20% rate.
So the SLO is...
Here is 20%, yes.
Okay, so that is a very important...
Yes.
Okay, so my question then is, if the teachers are making up their own benchmarks, right? In terms of their own performance?
With our approval, yes.
With your approval, right. Knowing that administrators aren't the experts in all curriculum, correct? I mean...
Fair enough. In physics, our high school principal might not be an expert.
So what is the, what is the administrative team doing to make sure that the benchmarks that are being used by the teachers are effective benchmarks for measuring growth?
Yeah.
They're not, they're not low hurdles, right?
That's a really fair question. And I think there's a couple of things. Number one, we're asking the teachers to work collaboratively, collaboratively with their peers. So there's two or three people working together and creating these SLOs. So there's some peer pressure there also. The second piece is what we're doing is we're going to be looking at the data. Obviously, if they have a, if 100% of those kids are proficient on that exam, then obviously the form was set too low and we're going to have to modify that in future years and pay attention to this.
Well, I guess that's what I was going, I mean, are you guys using some other standard that you're bringing in to measure, you know, whether or not those benchmarks are effective? I.e., you know, as opposed to waiting till a test is done and say, "Okay, well, we expected a, you know, a normal distribution and instead we got a, you know, bimodal or whatever and so that, we're going to, we're going to modify that data or those benchmarks." Or are you looking at something outside saying, "Well, you know, I don't know, OJ Roberts uses these benchmarks to teach?"
The problem is, and your questions are very valid. And one of, one of the things we have to be able to do is, first, we have to have some trust in our teachers that they'll develop fair benchmarks over time. Second place, we'll reflect on the data afterwards. In terms of insurances, we can't be 100% sure. We're going to have to use our judgment. We've been doing this a while and we can use our judgment. If 100% of those kids come back as scoring advanced, obviously they've set the benchmark too low and we're going to have to be more critical of the teachers in terms of doing that.
I get that. But are there, are there outside resources that you can access? I mean, is the state providing you anything? Is the administrators association or whatever providing you?
Can I give you an example of something? Like for example, we had, over at Governor Mifflin during our in-service day, we had our art teachers, our foreign language teachers, they went over there and they were developing collectively as a group. And an expert group in Berks County, they were developing SLOs together right there. So that's an example of how we're trying to get the quality control of those benchmarks also at the same time.
But the Department of Education has people coming into, through the IUs to help. And we keep getting trainings on this, on this piece and how it's changing. So yes, there is support there for administrators to constantly know how to develop SLOs, how to oversee the development of SLOs.
So, okay. I mean, it would seem to me that if you're looking to drive performance, you know, I know as a manager that, you know, with my employees, I tend to set the benchmarks to be stretch goals, right? So you want to push performance up. But you always find that everybody tends to regress to the mean. And so you've got to move the mean, you constantly have to be pushing the mean. So I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, how you guys are going to manage that process?
And I think it's too new. And this is the first year, they are just going into place for us to be writing this year. So we would have to see what the measurement comes out next year as I guess part of the data piece. I don't know if it'll come out exactly, but...
Hey, one of the things, can I give you another example? We're going to be taking a look at our SLO scores. Let's say we have a language arts teacher, okay? They're assessed on the PSSA there and they're also, they're going to get a P-VAS score also. So what we're doing is we're looking at multiple pieces of data. Now, if this comes in, if they're 90% proficient in the SLO and everything else is, the P-VAS score comes back real poorly. Their PSSA achievement results are real poor. We're going to have a problem, we're going to have to look even closer at that person's SLO that they designed.
The other thing that you can do as a building is adopt an SLO as a, as a building-wide SLO. So if you want to drive your, your reading scores to go up, then everybody's going to be working, whether you're teaching history, music, art, you're going to be doing something that's going to help to drive that score.
But right now, if I'm hearing correctly, the state has set no benchmarks.
No.
So it's all going to be trial and error and you're not going to know what's the correct benchmark until after the...
Correct.
That being said, this would be a great opportunity for us to set some benchmarks pretty high. It's going to get that going. Is that a fair point to me?
I think right now it's a learning process for our staff in terms of even designing the SLOs themselves. And so we're in a little bit of a learning process. We've just started training our staff, obviously. We've gone out and done services for them. So they're working on designing them. We're looking, we're trying to, I mean, they had to develop multiple performance measures for the goal itself. We're working with the staff on this particular...
Has there been consideration of doing a building-wide SLO instead of individual? That way you have a greater focus on...
We've done grade level SLOs in terms of, we've done some things there. I know at least one of our elementary schools was targeting writing as a particular piece. So one of the things you want to do with your SLOs is you want to make them a productive tool to target weaknesses. And so one of the things you want to do is you want to look at your overall data and you want to pinpoint, okay, this is an area of concern. Now, can, can we address through the SLO process those particular areas of weakness? Because obviously that will get people's attention and focusing their energies on that particular area. So we've looked at it that way also.
Are there any other, I guess, well, are there, how are other school districts? Are there any other, I guess, well, are there, how are other school districts addressing this issue? And are there other ones that you can look to as a model, say, boy, these guys really did it well, can we talk to them about whatever the SLO result is? You know, a fourth grader, you know, learning whatever, should, when they get done, should be hitting this type of a benchmark?
Right.
And set that as, and say, oh, that's a great goal. We're gonna take that and pull that into our school district. Or are there other states that have this type of a model that you can take a look at for, you know, whatever that SLO is?
One of the things we've been doing, we've been sharing with our staff, other examples of SLOs that have been, like model SLOs that PDE's put out throughout our staff. And you are, you are correct, and although the models differ a little bit between different states, New York is an example of the state that does SLOs. I think Ohio's a state that does SLOs. And we try, there's web resources, that's one of the fortunate things nowadays, there's web resources available that we can share with staff. And we've, we gave a whole packet of different examples to take a look at as we were designing this.
Right now, as a whole, the state of Pennsylvania is in this together, and we just started developing SLOs in September of 2014. So it's just, and we're just now digging.
No, I got it, but I guess I'm looking at it as Connor does, as an opportunity to really set the bar high for everybody.
There's some schools that are doing the bare minimum because they're looking, and I'm not saying we are, we haven't jumped on that track, but there are some schools that are trying to challenge the Department of Education because they feel as though, you know, this is just one more of those unfunded mandates that's coming down through, and we're not going to, you know, jump real big into, you know, doing everything. We're gonna do the bare minimum. But we're...
Does that help?
Right, no one. So we're trying to attack it a little bit differently, and we're looking at our score, we're using data to help develop our student learn outcomes, so.
If I understand, I think if you can collaborate a little, that's always good, but even unconventional resources, I know like BCTC over the last few years has worked on writing and all their, you know, and they've done that, I don't know that they would call it an SLO, but it was, it was a goal across the board in every program welding, you know, whatever. They worked on projects that would help with the ratings.
They may have been as part of the pilot program.
So, you know, it doesn't hurt to maybe think about trying to reach out to unconventional resources too.
Definitely.
The big thing here, guys, I want you to understand is clearly it's changing from the way we are evaluating our teachers, from a very process-oriented approach to a more results-oriented approach. I think in the long run, this is gonna help our student achievement and help our teachers grow also.
Quick question. In the past, wasn't it two observations per teacher per year?
Yeah, in general, yeah. Depends, it can vary a little bit, but guys, depending on what you're doing per year.
I mean, that was all, what was it? That was like 100% of their...
Yeah, that was 100% of their evaluations.
Evaluation, so...
The observations, yes.
Which is incredible to me, that in two visits you can evaluate someone's performance 100%. Here, even 50% is a pretty huge number.
Can I add something to what you're saying? When you say there's requirements and there's the actual practice of what principals do, principals are constantly in classrooms. We taught, these are called clinical observations, these are long observations, but principals are in classrooms on a regular basis in terms of evaluating teachers and gathering evidence for this particular model. It's not just that two times or one time they're doing the clinical long observation with them. Like I said, they're in there much more than that.
Is there any way to incorporate, I mean, I see here there's like student project pursuant to local requirements, student portfolios pursuant to local requirements. How much local stuff can you guys put into these performance measures to use that as part of the evaluation tool? Do you have any?
Right now, we're basically following the model that everyone else in Berks County is, and they're using the SLO process for this particular piece of the pie. That's basically what we're following.
I guess what I'm wondering is, could you incorporate something like student evaluations?
In there? No, I don't think I would find, I don't think that would be legal to do that. A student evaluation of a teacher, I don't think that would be legal, certainly.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Colleges do it all the time. Evaluate the course, evaluate the effectiveness of the teacher, evaluate this, and they take that as part of the feedback as whether or not, you know, they're getting what they need to out of it. You don't do it, obviously, at kindergarten level, but I mean, I think if you're a senior in high school or something else, no?
I think you might have a problem with the association. It happens usually...
Just asking the question.
It usually happens in college courses where you're looking at a teacher's going into tenure, before they get tenured?
It happens all the time.
As I was saying, I could say in a college class I took, it was that way.
Mine were more of the tenure, I mean, going, you know, achieving tenure, or maybe it was people that were tenured. Could be, what type of, do they have a union?
I'm just saying, it seemed to me, I was just asking the question, if there's other data points that you could pick to help measure performance.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
What was this one? Is this the, is this the, this is the SLO itself?
Yes. I have my copy right in front of me. Yes, that's what they're using.
Mr. Hurley, would you guys be able to provide us with like an example that's completed?
I'll send it off to you.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see what it actually looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Moving on, Mr. Kirk, for our training instruction committee?
Yes, the committee is going to meet on November 25th at the Denny Boone Area School District District Offices, and it's in the cafeteria at five, and after that, it'll be the policy committee meeting at noon seven. So, two meetings, one meeting.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Building and ground, Ms. Wodowski or Mr. Small, somebody wanna discuss this sale of this backhoe?
Sure, the facilities committee didn't meet last Monday. One of the things we discussed is apparently the district owns a 1954, the national backhoe that they no longer need, and they were looking for permission to dispose of that amount of $1,000.
It's a classic. Can I get hold of that?
If you wanna pay more, we'll pay there.
Not in its present condition.
It's been modified, taken apart.
We have a buyer lined up for it, or permission to list it at that? Is there a buyer lined up for it at the thousand?
Yes.
Is it in term?
The person that's had it has several years.
It actually is a middle-sized school district, physical possession at the time. Apparently there was a trade.
For a bucket truck?
Long time story, but apparently we got a bucket truck and traded for this, but we don't have the title to the bucket truck either, so we're sending that back to wherever it came from and just looking to get a monetary value for the backhoe that hasn't been in really in the town's possession for, I don't know, three, five years.
Four years.
Two years.
So it's already been off premises, this'll just get it off the books.
Yes.
Correct.
Do we still have some type of liability for it because it's our property?
Well, that's, we'd like, I mean, I probably...
Part of what we're trying to eliminate.
That's right, that's how we'd like to transfer the, that's not gonna tell you probably, but the origin server, whatever they call it, I don't know, so get rid of it. So we were recommending that. Additionally, we talked about a couple other things. Update, we got updates on the boiler project. I believe that's pretty much completed. I think that Casey was tweaking a couple things with the gas company, and, but the boiler should be 100% shortly. We also discussed the reserve study briefly, and we had some concerns with some of the, I guess, some of the suggested data or the numbers, the savings and study assumptions, thank you, that were used. So, well, I know some people in the finance committee also had looked at that. So we'd like to, we're gonna have a joint meeting to kind of discuss what we'd like to get from the engineers and then bring them back in to discuss that with them. So we'll be meeting on the 24th at six o'clock on that. And I know I'm missing something that we talked about, but I can't remember what it is right now. The building unit, we're still wrapping that up and getting some information from administration, so that will be, that's a running topic, so. Did you have anything on that, on the backhoe situation or anything else?
No, not really. It's just a matter of cleaning up something that was done two or three years ago that wasn't totally completed, and this will complete it and...
Oh, we also talked about the vehicle fleet, and kind of say a fleet, actually.
I don't even recall the fleet.
Needs a little updating, but we're, we have a vehicle that's in the shop that's trying to get an appraisal, or I mean, an estimate on the fix. That is a plowing vehicle, so I don't know what that is. Casey's getting some proposals or quotes for some replacement vehicles, and we'll be looking at that. He's also, hopefully within the next couple months, he and Lauren are getting together equipment lists of all the equipment that we have, what we need, what we don't need, what we might go to sell, to buy some of the things that we could use or would serve us better. So, but they're trying to inventory all that and let us know what they...
Isn't that the end of the reserve study?
No, not vehicles.
No, it's... Specifically, real estate, infrastructure.
So...
How many vehicles do we have just offhand?
Uh, I'm gonna defer to Casey here, since I don't remember.
Two of them makes one.
When you say maintenance vehicles, are those just pickup trucks and vans or they...
We have a dual-truck, standard truck, there's a Ford that body mounts currently are rotted out that it won't pass inspection. That's the one getting the estimate. We have an 88 Chevy and a 92 Chevy that the grounds department uses at the high school and middle school. We have a van that the carpenter uses at the high school. We have a courier van, and there's two athletic vans. I believe that's nine.
I guess, I guess you have a 150 that they've been plowing with that's really not...
Yeah, the one that won't pass.
That's the one that's, it won't pass, okay.
And it holds.
So...
Does something like that need to pass inspection if it just sits on campus somewhere?
I don't think it just sits on campus.
Huh?
I don't think it just sits on campus.
It does, a couple different locations.
If it just sat at the high school, it would be all right, but that would be it.
High school is contracted mostly by...
Right.
With the big trucks.
Yeah.
If you really...
I just wasn't sure if there's no residual value to something like that, whether you just move it to a particular location, just use it on-site?
And I would defer, I just wanted to ask the insurance, is what if it hits a vehicle on, you know, or something happens?
Depending on the appraisal that we get for the repair that makes it inspectable, will determine, do we wanna keep it or do we want it?
I mean, as I saw, most of those vehicles are 10 years old, they got about 100,000 miles on them.
It's 10. One's 20.
Yeah, I mean, with the section of two of them, I mean, the majority of them are about 10 years old.
The van is newer.
Or newer, right. 2017, they don't really...
Athletic vans and the...
What they're looking at and coming back to us with is some information on what we pay for snowplow removal to outside sources. I mean, we could, we could say, okay, I'll replace it, and we're gonna probably pay more. Yes, and we asked for two or three years worth of history on that, because obviously last year was banned. Here, the two years before that, we probably had enough snow.
It'll be interesting to see what also what we're spending on maintenance on the individual vehicles. Do you track it by vehicle? Do you track it overall?
Well, we're beginning to track it by vehicle.
Mr. Small, if I'm not mistaken, this inventory started with you checking each vehicle against the insurance. So if we were to not fix this vehicle to pass inspection, can it be insured?
Would have to be determined, sort of classified as a grounds vehicle, just like our turf equipment.
It would just seem to me, if you guys take a look at the maintenance costs of those vehicles on an annual basis, I mean, you know, you could take, I mean, nowadays financing, you can still get 0% financing on a lot of trucks and things of that nature, so...
Yeah, so they're looking at that, and then, as far as the equipment, it's also like the lawnmowers, the stove blowers, that kind of thing. And currently, each building has kind of like a maintenance crew and their own equipment, and he's looking at consolidating that and having a landscaping trailer and people that go out, you know, so that you don't have to have another or two mowers at every, at every school. And maybe we can trade in some of the equipment that's not really the ideal equipment for that job and get a better, you know, wide mower, so they can be more efficient and...
Sounds like a good plan.
He's researching that, and he's gonna come back. He's got a lot on his plate that he's come back with recently, so, but it's good, so.
We're going in the right direction.
Did you have a December date or no?
Well, since we are planning to meet on the 24th, I know the first was banned for a lot of people because it is the first day of hunting season, and it is also holiday. So I don't, I didn't really set a December date. We can look at that over the next couple weeks, you know, with the holidays, I don't know what people's schedules are, but I don't have a December date.
Thank you, Mr. Wodowski. And now, without further ado, our audit presentation.
I guess this is to start out, give a couple comments. Roxanne's gonna do it in the lead line, and Roxanne's in the middle, a couple highlights of the letter itself.
Quick question before you guys get started. This report you just handed out is the same as the PDF that we all got on Friday?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It is the same. The final that report will include two more pieces of information. The management discussion and analysis that Lauren and from administration are putting together is still not included in this report. And then there are a few findings that we had in our testing. So a corrective action plan addressing those findings will also have to be included at the back of this report before it's actually bound and then submitted to the federal clerkhouse as well as the PI Office of Budget.
Can we have your names, please?
My name is Linda Pyback, the audit partner on the unit major. And this is Roxanne McLeary. She is a auditor in our office. She's actually in charge of the audit. We're out here doing fieldwork with two or three of our other professionals. First thing I wanna focus on is the independent auditors report, page one and two. This report is on the fiduciary status itself. The opinion is on the bottom of page one, and it's an unmodified opinion. It used to be called unqualified. It is what we call a clean opinion, so it is the highest level of assurance that we can issue. Right behind page one and two are the statement of debt position and the statement of activity. These are actually two financial statements that are full of goals. So what that means is, we not only include your fund information, which is what the U.S. of War look at every month, we take that fund information and actually add to it your buildings, all your assets that you own, the value of those assets, and then we also pick up the related liabilities. If you have debt on those buildings, that's included. There's one large piece that is not included at this point in time. In any discussions around the state, the unfunded pension obligation is not included in these financial statements. So right now, where it says liabilities, the noncurrent liability section, beginning next year to the following year, the unfunded pension obligation will be going on the books, okay? That is going to be a large liability for everybody across the state. I mean, it's not just the state of Pennsylvania, it's across the globe. If you go to page four, though, the change in net position is really where most of the bond funding agencies have been looking as far as valuing schools. Every time you go out and get a bond, your school is rated. They look at a couple of things. Are you able to pay large improvements or large repairs or maintenance types items without going out and borrowing money? Is your change in net position favorable? Do you have favorable trends? Has it been a positive number for the last couple of years? You can see that this year it's a negative $1,553,000. It's been negative the last three years. So Daniel Boone's trend as far as is it positive or negative, it's a negative trend. So you're... or negative, it's a negative trend, so your bond rating agencies would not look as favorably on Daniel Boone as some of the other districts. What they are saying is that we can expect the change in the pension obligation to be about three times what your annual salary is. Daniel Boone's salary on an annual basis right now is $24 million. Three times that is about $72 million. So right now, if you look at the last line where it says net position, your ending value, you're at 3.9 million right now. Once this goes on the books, you will have a negative net position of about $68 million. Most of the districts that we actually audit are going to have a negative net position, so it'll be very interesting to see what bond rating agencies will be doing.
A couple of quick questions for you. Didn't, the year before, I believe, wasn't the multiplier two and a half times the annual payroll? So who made the adjustment to increase that to three times? Was that from the state?
That was from the state, that's actually from the valuation, evaluators that actually have looked at this, and it's a number of things. It's the age ratio as far as how long we live, that increase, the return on investments, actually they were using a higher rate than we're actually earning, so they had to drop that, so there were a number of factors that were put into this, but as they continue to evaluate this, every two years, those parameters will have to be looked at and adjusted as necessary.
But that liability actually exists now, and last year and the year before, it just wasn't listed.
It's, absolutely, it's always been there, the problem is, we do have a large mass of population that will be retiring, that will be draining that account probably faster than money is going in, so it is something that has to be addressed.
So, just real quick, what would you attribute the, I just want to make sure, in terms of, was there a variance between last year and this year in terms of the change in net position? Was it still 1.5 million?
Last year was down by 703,000.
So what would you account for the variance then?
Part of it is, you do have a derivative that's being valued every year.
Right.
The other thing is your depreciation, how fast your assets are being depreciated, how many new assets are going on the books, right now your depreciation is much larger than new assets.
It's about $3 million.
Exactly.
Yeah. So would you say that most of this is the valuation of bond derivative?
It's a piece of it, it's definitely a piece of it, but at this, at the present time, one of the factors is, we're picking up depreciation, we have no money set aside for capital reserve for the most part, the balance here is very low compared to most of the districts that we actually audit. If you had a major renovation that took place, let's say that your census started going right back up, and you ran out of space in your building, you would have to go out and probably borrow almost 100% of that building cost. Not all districts are in that position, some of them have reserves to help pay for a piece of that.
So you guys look at what the funds are in, just the fund balance differently than if they're in reserves in terms of this measurement, or is this a net number of assets to liabilities?
This is a net number.
So it really doesn't matter then if it's in, if it's actually in a reserve account, so long as it's just cash available?
Funds available.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Any other questions on this? If not, we move on to the actual fund statements, which is more of the information that you're used to seeing.
If you want to turn to page 43, this is actually your budget versus actual schedule for the general fund. So on this statement here, we've got your original budget, your final budget, and then to compare it to how your funds actually came in for the current year. At the very bottom of this page here, on page 43, you could see you budgeted to use $2.2 million of fund balance, and you actually came in with $189,000 revenue over expenditures from net income, so you had a positive variance of $2.4 million. When you look down this statement, you can see in your total revenues, your total revenues were, they were under, over budget, excuse me, by 18,000, so your revenues were right in line, but you did have variances within those local sources, state sources, federal sources. Local revenues were over budget by 427,000, and in there you had, it was basically your real estate taxes, current real estate taxes, earning from taxes. State revenues were over budget by 186,000, which was basically due to your state retirement subsidy, and then your federal sources were under budget by 631,000, which was mostly entitled on and meddable access. Going into your expenditures, total expenditures is about two-thirds of the way down the page, and you could see that came in under budget by 2.4 million. Looking through there, you can see where your significant variances are in your regular programs, your expenditures were under budget by 1.1 million, most of that was in payroll, salaries, benefits, and also purchase services. Going, continuing down the page there, special programs were over budget by 183,000, that was again mostly purchase services tuition. Continuing down the page, large variances, instructional staff was under budget by 120,000, again, most of that was in your salaries. Continuing down, operation and maintenance of plant services, under budget by 408,000, mostly salaries and benefits, and there was a large, there was an under budget variance in electricity. Continuing down to debt service, that you see is under budget by 809,000, you had the extra debt payment last year, so that's under budget this year, and then your other financing sources and uses was under budget by 32,000, so in total that gives you the positive variance of 2.4 million. Adding the 189,000 of net income this year, so you're beginning fund balance of 4.5 million, gives you any fund balance of 4.7 million. Any questions on that page?
Is there gonna be a note somewhere in here as it relates to the bond payment issue, referring back to prior years and the double payment that was made? I didn't see it, I'm just, maybe I missed it.
I don't know that we did, but probably the better place to put that would be in management's discussion and analysis, I mean, because right now we're on par with where we should be with debt, and our debt disclosure is largely in maturities as far as going forward. We can take a look at it.
I was just, the page 34, note six is where it shows your debt payments and when they're due.
Right.
So there wouldn't really be anything to note at this point as, you know, a payment not due or anything like that, because the payments are all due. So if you want to include, if you're talking more about the budget variance, that would be a good thing to put in.
Well, yeah, that's where I'm going, because, you know, if someone's sitting around and making, you know, assumptions as to why there's such a large variance, clearly over a third of that is due to a double payment and a timing issue in terms of a debt payment, it's not underestimating or overestimating our, our budget line items.
And that would definitely be something that you would want to include in the management's discussion analysis, where basically management is saying, this is what happened this year, and this is the result of our operations, and these are the reasons why such and such results happen.
Okay.
What the requirement said that management's discussion analysis isn't that large variance, and this is what happened.
If you want to flip back to page five, then, this is your governmental funds balance sheet. So again, this is more of what you're used to seeing on a monthly basis, this is the modified accrual basis accounting. So we just talked about your any fund balance in the general fund of 4.7 million, so at the bottom of page five, under the general fund column, you can see the fund balance classifications that that's broken into. The non-spendable fund balance, you have 171,000, which is for prepaid expenditures, which you could see up in the asset section, so that's money that's already been spent, it's already out the door, so you can no longer use that money. The next category that you have there, assigned fund balance, you have $2,410,000, $134,000. That's made up of $786,405 that was used to balance the 2014-15 budget, so for 2014-15, you budgeted more expenditures than you did revenues, so you're using fund balance, so part of this fund balance is assigned to that. You also have assigned $500,000 for capital reserves to make a transfer to the capital projects fund, and you also assigned this year $1,123,729 for retirement rate increases. So that's money that's going to be set aside to be used towards future piece or free increases. That leaves you with an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 2.1 million, that is 3.9% of your budgeted 2014-15 expenditures. The cap that you're allowed to have as unassigned fund balance in the general fund is 8% of next year's budgeted expenditures. Your unassigned fund balance is a little on the low side compared to most of our districts. Can we make more comments about that?
When you, when you look at that, you have to take into consideration cash flow, salary and benefits are your largest expense, so you want to make sure you have at least more than two months of salary and benefit buildup. The other piece you want to look at is your debt service requirements, if you have large debt payments in July, August, even the beginning of September, you have to have funds available to take care of those, because it's not until September that the majority of your real estate taxes start coming through your door for the next year. So those are all things to keep in the back of your mind when you're looking at fund balance.
The other funds that you have on this week are your debt service fund, so you have 1.3 million in that fund, in assigned fund balance, and then your non-major funds include your capital projects funds, which has 405,000, and the special revenue fund, which has 99,000. Do you have any questions on that page?
What is the 504, oh, that's, is that sitting in our capital reserves?
That's capital for yet, it's your former capital reserves, which is now called capital projects, so that's all money that was left over from, you know, excess fund transfers from the general fund to capital reserves in the past.
Oh, we used that last year.
So that wasn't happening, was it?
No, this is, this is...
This is all out of June 30th.
This is coming.
Okay. So it's transparenceness in the capital.
These numbers are as of June 30th, 2014. We set aside 500,000 to the general fund to be transferred to capital reserves, but I believe you had 200,000 left on the boiler project, if I'm not mistaken, Lauren, at the end of the year, so that would have come out of this number, so out of the 405,000. So at this current time, whatever expenses have come into the capital projects fund would come out of that 405,000 number, this is all out of June 30th. Any other questions on that page?
Well, it should be like 200,000, right? Wait, 500, we said there was another 200,000, something comes in?
There might be a question.
There's a question, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a question.
We're just talking.
Yeah.
Okay. The next statement then, we'll just talk about briefly, 10, page 10 and 11 is your primary fund, which is the food service fund. So on page 11, you can see this is the result of operation, this year you had a decrease in net position of $88,000. Last year there was a loss of $16,000, this year your operating revenues compared to last year decreased $130,000, and the operating expenses decreased $92,000. So overall, those decreases contributed to the higher loss that you had this year. Most of our experiencing losses in the food service fund because of the nutrition standards that have been put in place, so at this time it's just something that needs to be discussed, how you're going to continue to have that operating going forward.
Are they seeing the same kinds of losses on a percentage basis, or is it, are we an outlier?
Yeah, it's about the same, I'm trying to think, do you have any school that had a positive, like more?
Well, I mean, this has been a downward trend for the last five years, I mean, we almost, I'm trying to think what we had, at one point found like over half a million dollars, or six or seven hundred thousand dollars in there, now it's down to 100.
As each year, as the nutrition requirements have gotten more stringent...
Yeah, no, we know we're working on, I'm just curious as to whether we were an aberration or we're on par with everyone else.
Yeah, I mean, the losses have kind of been consistent across the board, but, you know, some are higher, some are lower, so I wouldn't say that you're an outlier to most of everybody else, the losses are definitely consistent across the board.
We already have quite a few schools that have been subsidizing the food service operation already, so, you know, this past year you didn't subsidize anything, but many of the smaller districts that are having problems where you can see in some of our larger districts that just because of the economy of scale, the number of meal places are, even those districts are seeing losses.
Any other questions on this report, fun?
Mr. Small, where primarily, where, is it the high school, middle school, elementary school, where we see the biggest decrease? Because I know we've, we've dabbled in the subject before about, you know, where, where's the cost benefit to providing, you know, looking for the federal subsidy in order, you know, because we have to meet those standards, at what point is the breaking point between the, you know, this is how much we're paying for free, this is how much the free and reduced would cost us, and would we net more by declining the federal subsidy and going back to our own food service that the kids actually want?
The high school is the biggest part of it that needs attention, and that's what we're looking at. As a part of our RFP going out, do we want to stay with the program in total, do we want to break out?
You were talking about that.
Wednesday, huh? Yeah, so one of the things that Finance Committee we've been doing for the last couple of months is we're talking about this issue, and what should we do? We knew we were going out for an RFP for the food services going forward, so the question was, we're actually approaching it several different ways, you know, doing RFP for the whole program, RFP, we're gonna jettison the federal program at the high school and keep the elementary schools in it, and so we're just gonna see where it gets us, so we have a couple of different options to choose from, because it's been a disaster at the high school.
If you think about it, the older kids know they have the ability to make choice, the elementary school, younger children, pretty much is...
Well, I just know, I mean, the, when we were, like, the building of grounds last year, you know, Mr. Smith was saying some of the equipment, we were constantly robbing from this building, pulling equipment, you know, which was great in the short term, but, you know, our, keep seeing our cafeteria fund being replenished and not being replenished, and they have, you know, aging equipment, and we're not gonna have the ability to fund purchases as equipment breaks down.
There's another issue with that, too, but I'd rather turn through this audit.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just one other thing, so just for the benefit of everybody here, typically you guys, you know, you have a formula for determining as to what that cash balance should be, correct?
In the food service fund?
Yeah, as I understood, you said no more than three months' operating cost in terms of coverage?
Right, that's what the state recommends.
Right.
Typically, you would have at least one month's coverage in there, and right now, we're not.
Yeah, I mean, if you looked at this, state coverage would be $445,000 as opposed to 112.
And one other thing to keep in mind, if you look at the balance sheet on page 10, you have cash in there of 417,000, but you also have a large interfund payable...
Right.
Of 316,000.
And the interfund payable is, what is that, stat, what is that?
That would be money that's owed back to the general fund, whether that's for payroll or...
Payroll, probably, right.
Anything that the general public have paid for on behalf of the food service fund, that's, that's money that's owed back to the general fund. So that's something to keep in mind as well when you're looking at your cash balance in that food service fund.
Thank you.
The rest of what's in this report then is basically your footnotes, so this goes into all of your accounting policies. We don't normally go into detail on those, just point out a couple of key notes. I already pointed out note six is the debt, on page 34 is where your insurance is scheduled, so that shows you all the debt payments that are coming due when they're due. Note 15 does go into detail about the fund balance classifications that I went over, how those are broken out into assigned and unassigned fund balances, and then note 16 is just the new accounting pronouncements, and that talks about the new pension pronouncement that's maybe a bit different next year, that Linda had described, meaning the pension obligation. Page 22 is note 15, page 41 is note 15. The only other thing then that we will really touch on is page 56 is the schedule of findings and question prompts.
I'm sorry, what page number were we on again?
56. This is basically the summary of results of the audit, so the first half of this page talks about the financial statements, so you have an unmodified opinion as Linda went over. We did have a material weakness, which if you flip to page 57, we do talk about the account reconciliation and material adjustments that were pushed as a result of the audit, so you can look at that and more... So you can look at that in more detail on page 57. Then we continue down. We didn't have any other significant deficiencies or non-compliance. And then going into the federal awards section, this year you had an unmodified opinion on your federal awards. Below, you can see for your single audit, we did test Title I and IDEA, and we did have a significant deficiency for those programs. So if you flip to page 58, that's where it goes into detail about the significant deficiency, and that was for cash management and reporting. You guys did have significant turnover in your administrative positions this year, and we do describe that in here. And that was the main cause for the reports not being filed timely throughout the year.
So this is just a reporting issue in terms of these reports sent back to PDE or whatever it was?
Yeah. Title I requires quarterly cash on hand reports, and none of those were filed this year. IDEA should also have, according to the terms of the IU, periodic throughout the year, and again, no reports were submitted throughout the year. So due to the turnover and what was going to be charged to those federal programs, none of the reports were filed throughout the year. And then that basically summarizes the audit.
No, we didn't lose any funding.
Could you explain that bottom line? Audit, auditee qualified as low risk?
Sure. Auditee qualified as low risk auditee, and you guys did not qualify as a low risk auditee. Last year, you did have a material weakness for the federal programs when we tested both Title I and IDEA. This year, the issue that we had was reporting, and it was only a significant deficiency. Last year, we actually had issues with the allowing costs and activities, and there was actually question calls reported for Title I. So because of those factors, you were not considered a low risk auditee, which means if you're a low risk auditee, we only have to test 25% of your federal programs. So because you were not low risk auditee, we're required to test 50% of your federal programs.
So if the business office cleans up the reporting, that would change us to a low risk?
Yes.
Two consecutive years with no issues, no material weaknesses, the third year you'd be back to a low risk auditee.
Any other questions, Ross, on the audit report?
When do you guys put together your corrective action plan? Is that already written up and ready to go? You said you had to add something to this.
Plan will come from Lauren. And I had already sent him the template for MDNA, Management Possession Analysis. So he'll need to get us both of those items, so we can include that in the final audit report. It's my understanding you want that for the 24th, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So if we can get that by the beginning of next week?
You'll have both of those tomorrow.
Perfect. We'll have no problem getting the final report.
Did you see the board on those? So we can take a look at those as they go out?
Right, 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 right.
Okay. But you're going to include some of those additional notes because it relates to the bond issue and some of the discussion.
The only other thing we have to go over then is the two letters that we slipped into the front of that packet for you. There's two there, the thinner one is what we call the management letter. So in this letter, we basically go over any issues that came up as a result of our audit procedures that weren't significantly enough to be included in the actual audit report as a binding. So in here, we just talk about your internal control policies and procedures. Again, here, we're noting you had significant turnover in administration this year. So as we were doing our testing, doing our auditing procedures, there were some inconsistencies. And we're just recommending that the administration review the policies and procedures that are in place to determine whether proper controls are in place, and then implement new policies and procedures to get those key controls in place. The last item there on that page, just for talking about district policies and procedures, this was in this letter last year. Your actual administrative policies and procedures are pretty out of date, and we recommended that you just review all the policies and procedures that you have in place, get those up to date. And we've been talking with Lauren, that was something that you guys were actually in the process of starting, and you were going to be working with PASBA to get those updated. So we just have that as well.
Which policies and procedures are you talking about? Or just...
Just your general, all your general policies and procedures, the one that you could have listed on your website, so all the different, you know, where...
Not a particular range, you're saying, in general.
In general, most of them are fairly out of date.
I'm amazed by that because we spent the last two and a half years updating, I want to say, what, all the 100s, the 200s?
I don't know if we're in, I don't know if we got all the 200s, but we've been updating the board procedures, and we've been reviewing a lot of them, and the ones that take priority, we've been reviewing. So are there any specific ones related to financials?
The ones that we specifically look at are the financial ones.
Can you provide us a list of those in particular? I mean, that you can focus on?
I can provide you a list of the ones that we have. I know I go on your website and go into those business policies. A lot of them are dated back in the 90s.
Yeah.
They're very old format, and they're from the 90s. So you just want to review those policies just to make sure that everything that should be included in them currently isn't.
Right, okay.
We could prioritize that in our list.
But this ties into what Mrs. Bikes has been saying about using PASBA to update some of these, so.
Would you be prepared to talk about that later in the meeting, PASBA?
Actually, sure.
Let me ask if I may, Mr. Small, you've gone through this.
I don't have the information.
Do you have any comments, pro or con, about the audit?
No, I'm fully in agreement. There's things that are going to be cleaned up, and there's a written directive that's going out to the personnel in the business office.
The other items that are included in this letter then are just recommendations for you to keep in mind. We talked about documentation controls to be good for federal funds. So this is just key things to have in place in regards to your federal programs. The next item there, again, we're just reminding you about the pension pronouncement that's coming into effect next year. And the last item on this page is just to keep you informed about the change in the she property rules. So there was a change from five years to this year, and this will be effective for your next report that's due April 15th, 2015. Any other questions on that letter? The last letter then that you have in your packet is just the communication letter. This is a letter that we provide basically to the governance of the school district. We're summarizing the results of the audit in here. We're including basically what our procedures were, what we performed, the results of the audit, no disagreements with management. We talk about the corrected and uncorrected statements, and attached to this letter is all the journal entries then that we did post as a result of the audit. A few of those were provided by the business office when we were performing the audit due to the timing, and they still coming in while we were out to do the audit procedures. Those would be marked PBC, that means prepared by client, and all the other journal entries were ones then that we posted as a result of our audit procedures. Any questions on that?
Where would it say PBC?
If you flip to like the back where you see the actual journal entries.
Yeah, that's from...
So if you go just looking here by chance on, I don't see one on there. If you go to one, the one for food service.
Oh, I see, page two out of three.
Or, yeah, on food service, page one or two, there's one on there.
What does C represent or AA?
Those are, that's just our internal, that's where, that's our work paper, where we did the work that shows that journal entry. So the only ones that would really mean anything to you as far as that reference would just be PBC. And then these journal entries were already posted by the business office, so they're included in the AFR that was filed with the state. I have one more letter then that's just the management documentation letter, and that I just need signed by Lauren and the board president. And this basically is just, you're providing us, you're just telling us that you gave us everything we needed to do the audit. Everything you provided us was original copies. We got all the reports we needed, we talked to all the individuals that we needed. So I have one copy for you guys and one copy I need to sign back.
In regards to these journal entries, is this a question of, are some of these due to, because I've always heard this since I've been on the board, is sometimes that the requirements from PDE change in relation to where you're supposed to be coding certain things? Is this a, is this, how much of this is attributable to that, or is none of it attributable to that, and we just made mistakes in terms of where we were coding certain expenses? Or is this a judgment call being made by, let's say, CPA versus, you know, doing an audit versus a business manager or a business office team doing it?
I wouldn't say it's a judgment call because the state has a pretty standard chart of accounts. So they're pretty strict in the chart of accounts that's out there, and that's what's supposed to be followed. I would honestly attribute a lot of it, again, to the turnover that you had this year. I mean, you had significant turnover in the business office this year. You went the majority of the year without having a full-time business manager, and you also had turnover in the supervisor's manager position. So in my opinion, it's more just things that got overlooked because of having the turnover in the...
I was going to say, because I don't recall ever seeing a journal entry addendum to one of your letters turned into this.
It would have been last year as well, I think the last two years.
And it really depends, some of the years it was more like more just cash to accrual entries, just booking them at the end of the year. And you're always going to have that with most of our schools because of the fact that many of our schools report on a cash basis who out here in many areas. But here, I think it was a little bit more of, we have some cash to accrual, but some of it was just as we were digging through and trying to reconcile accounts, things were uncovered. I think both Lauren and I liked what came on board right as we were trying to get the audit process started. So I don't believe they had the time to actually really dig through these accounts.
Okay. Roxanne, your thinner one.
Sure.
Page two, first paragraph, documentation of controls and procedures for federal funds. The first bullet under the paragraph, use of conference of interest statements.
Yes.
Did you, are you saying you didn't find them in there?
No, no, this one, only the first...
It's just a recommendation?
Yes. Only the first two items on there were basically the results of our audit procedures, things that we found. The next page there is just items that we're recommending, just to keep in mind, just reminders for you guys.
Because Sandy does a superb job of tracking.
It's like, I have those, Roxanne.
That page is just recommendations, just reminders for you to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a little nervous, I'm sorry.
Any other questions, Ross, then?
Doesn't seem to be, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll bring this letter up to you then. If you want, you can hang on to it and sign it, and then just send it back to me. I'll just need it before we issue the final reports.
Okay, moving on to the next items under finance. Are there any comments or questions about any of the items under 8B or C?
So just per C, I was looking through, and I saw some transfers for some radio equipment. Do you know what that was for a transportation?
It was small, it was like 600 to 800.
Kind of struck me as unusual.
Radio equipment, that was for the two ways for...
For the buses. For the buses, when they're pulling up to the schools, because of the number of buses that are in front of Monocacy and Birdsboro, it's more or less for them to communicate and say, we're here.
Oh, it's to communicate with the school?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right.
Something we needed to be able to improve the runs.
Yeah, it was 656 dollars.
Yeah, it was...
It was just a couple of them. Yeah, they are, it's just, it's just a conversation with the person that's sitting on the corner with the clipboard.
Thank you.
And item D is a bid for copy paper?
It's the six notes under it.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Basil, the Finance Committee meeting?
Yep, sort of speaks for itself. Let me pull up my notes there. I thought I reported it in the October meeting, what we discussed, but...
Yeah, I believe you did.
So this is just... Yeah, so, I mean, what we're going to discuss is we're basically just going to recap, you know, what we've sort of already mentioned tonight, which is the...
RFP.
The RFP for the...
Preliminary for the budget.
And, yeah, the preliminary for the budget because quite frankly, we want to be able to present that to the board by the end of the month for its consideration, so that we can start that conversation. So that's pretty key, but I think we'll be spending just about all of our time on that. We're going to get an update on the Health Trust meeting that was actually held tonight. You know, one of the concerns I had at the last meeting when we were looking at the annual report, they had about $20 million sitting in their fund, and it earned, I think it was like $30,000 worth of interest or something like that. I mean, like, a ridiculously low amount of money. And Mr. Small had made some inquiries on behalf, and it turns out they've got it sitting in a checking account.
Oh, gee.
Earning like 0.1%, which I think is really absolutely unbelievable, you know, because you're actually losing money where it is right now. And they have a fiduciary responsibility, I think, to make sure that that's invested properly. So we'll see how, what other information these guys bring forward in terms of the Health Trust. But I think we're going to have to get more actively involved in those quarterly meetings and make sure that our presence is known, and they know we're looking over their shoulder. They're also pulling down some information in terms of, we asked for the claims history and the amount of money that we've contributed to date, and it looks like we're putting about $5 million a year into this fund. We don't know what the claims history is yet, so again, we still have some more information that we need to get from these guys.
Were you personally, like, doing a...
I think we're putting $400,000 a month into it. So it's about 4.9 million year in, year out. You only got back to 2012, but I thought we were in this thing going back to like, ooh...
I'll go back to 08 or something like, 09.
Is Lauren a representative on that board?
Well, I am, and Mike's a delegate. Mike has been to the last two meetings, he was there tonight. And they did seek him out because I've been inquiring about our claims, because our document says that we're entitled to know our claims as a district. They sought him out tonight and basically said, well, but we changed our document, and we've got to find out when, that we no longer have to give the district their individual claims. So we're going to...
Is there a reason they wouldn't be, or why not?
We've got to dig into it. This guy just came back at dinner tonight.
Because I think, I think, this is just me talking, all right? I think the issue is if people started digging into it and found out that their claims history is this big, and their premiums are this big, people are going to say, we're out, right? I mean, what's the point of being in this thing? We can do a better job on our own. And they would pull out. So, you know, I think there's a reason why you wouldn't share that information, but clearly the declarations that we have indicate that we're entitled to it. I think there's a big issue here. If they've changed or somehow amended it, how did they get that done and not notify us of the change?
As of this morning, this individual told me that it would be forthcoming. And then tonight, oh, by the way, so tomorrow morning, I've got to communicate back and say, show me why. And he wants to come over and talk to us, and yeah, you're invited, and I know it'll be a Finance Committee meeting.
Are those board members not on the Finance Committee? If you'd be interested in hearing, the first, Mr. Small prepared preliminary budget Wednesday night.
It's six o'clock.
There's tickets at the door.
Right.
And Mr. Dasky already talked about the joint meeting on the 24th.
Right. So everybody bone up on the Reserve Study, under questions.
Lot of pictures.
Well, that's the duty of it. You can skip a lot of the fluff and just get right down to the financial statements and take a look at the financial statements and make some pretty educational guesses as to if you think those things are in line with expectations. So Mr. Small, hopefully, Casey, hopefully you'll be there as well. And if you have any thoughts on what you've seen there in terms of their schedule of events, you know, if you could put that together in a spreadsheet and send it out prior to everybody that's going to be there so that we have your thoughts on that ahead of time, that'd be very, would be very appreciative. I don't have anything else to add in terms of the Finance Committee. I think the biggest issues are going to be the food service RFP and the budget for Wednesday.
You don't have a December meeting, do you?
I figured we'd play that one by year, we'd meet twice this month, and then, you know, we'll have to see what the deadlines are in December, especially with the bond issue coming out. There may be a need to meet prior or at a special time.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Basil. Moving on, personnel are all, all the personnel approvals are part of the voting meeting program. Are any questions about the monthly enrollment or student data report? Hearing none, we'll move on to policy. We're now having the second reading of the service animal in schools that the drug did move to Exeter, that's done. And the Policy Committee meeting for February 27th, November 25th. And this policy committee meeting, per your reception, November 25th. Mrs. Byts, did you wanna talk about the PSBA policy assistance?
I have the quote from PASBA that Dr. Sankar acquired for us, and I'd like to just read the seven parts of policy development services that they're offering for seventy-three hundred dollars. Comprehensive onsite review of all board minutes for the past three years, a complete review of all pertinent handbooks and collective bargaining agreements used in the district, along with an analysis of existing adopted policies. The writing, processing, electronic submission of customized first draft policies with legal citations to be submitted for board consideration. A work session with the board, administration, and a PASBA consultant to discuss suggested revisions and formulate a final draft of the policy manual if needed. Five, all processing and electronics transmission of intermediary changes and return of amended policies for board consideration and final adoption. Six, the adopted policy manual on a USB drive. And seven, during the policy development process, designated individuals will continue to receive email notifications each time a new issue of our policy newsletter, the Policy News Network, PNN, is available. District administrators and board members also have access to the PNN and related new and revised policies through the members-only section of the website. And during the process, the district continues to pay the annual cost of nine ninety-nine after the development, the portion of the services that we could pay to keep, continue to receive the Policy News Network for nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, which I don't know that would be valuable or not, but during the process, you get that for free. I guess you see what other districts are, are doing with their, with regard to the same policy issues.
Can I jump in here for a second? I think that, having been on the policy committee since it was started a few years back, we have, I think, lost a little bit of our way in that we're not really reviewing the policies we have, we tried to. But with all the changes in administration and the priorities of the district and policies we need to look at, for example, the service animals at school policy and the booster policy and stuff we're still working on, going back and looking at the policies we have in place now has really kind of taken a backseat. And that's not really a fault with the committee or the administration, it's just there's so much else happening in the district and it's a huge opportunity cost for the administration to go through all the policies we have now in addition to bringing forward these new policies. So I was on the fence about doing this PASBA project because I think, I mean, seventy-three hundred dollars. In the grand scheme of things, it's not that much for our district, but it's still a cost. But in the amount of time and energy we can save our administrators and they can focus better things, Mrs. Kramer even, I think that, and the policy committee can continue to work on the policies that we need to localize almost, if that makes sense. So I would, I would go for it if, if that quote is still current. And I think it would make, it would make the policy committee's job a whole lot easier and also I think it would save some time on the strategy of projects.
My feeling is the same. We're working in policy committee, one, what do we get, three or four maybe at a time? We've been overwhelmed by the booster policy, took a lot of our time. We meet once a month, that's, that's not even twelve a year because we don't meet in the summer. By the time you finish rewriting the hundreds of policies, they'd be outdated, the ones we started working on yesterday. So the only thing is, Mrs. Torja, I, I thought we were gonna try and get a quote to see if we could, if they would lower the quote considering the fact that the one hundreds and the two hundreds were done.
I think that we were looking into that and we, I do not have that answer for you tonight, but.
And either way, I don't think it's gonna be significant in light of, of everything that you're getting. So if that's if they come back to us, what are we gonna say, a couple hundred dollars? I can't imagine, based on, you know.
But basically what we're saying right now, if it's spread over three years, it'd be a little over twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
Right. And if it's spread over three years, which I don't remember where I saw that, I, I emailed this to everybody moments ago, so you can look at the quote again yourself.
If we were to go forward with this, we wouldn't just take for granted what PASBA tells us, we'd be looking at it through the policy committee still, just to make sure it stands up.
It would still take, right. Timing committee, we'd have.
But they would be doing the light work and the policy committee would just say yea or nay.
Yes, I imagine we'll be getting bigger chunks of them to okay at a time.
Yeah.
Knowing the research was already done.
And if, what happens, it comes down to whether it's our administration doing it at their own time, on district time, or PASBA. Additionally, the legal citation.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, it's kind of a wash, we pay our administrators to do it.
Yeah, they have their legal services over there, they can get the citations lined up.
It really seems like a bargain to me, and I think it is kind of a bargain in light of the fact that we pay twelve thousand dollars a year to be PASBA subscribers, and I believe that was sales fiction, we're getting this and all their legal expertise at a way discounted.
So if nobody objects, if we could include on the agenda for the next meeting, if the administration could get a quote.
We will get that.
And we'd either vote it up or down. But thank you for this, by the way.
Yep.
Thank you. If any, any other comments or questions? Saying, I don't know, we wanted transportation, Mr. Small, did you have an update on these routes?
Not an official update, other than to tell you that I'm continuing to monitor these routes. Done some bus following and I will be coming forward with some recommendations, but I don't have anything on paper officially yet, but there's some adjustments that I feel could be considered.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing listed under old business, does anyone have any old business to discuss? Seeing none, moving on to new business. There's, there's two grants, ready-to-learn grant, consolidated, Title I consolidated grant totaling about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Any comments or questions about those? Is this anything out of the norm here?
No, the ready-to-learn grant really kind of replaced the accountability block grant plus added some to it, and Title I has been the same for years. It's just letting you know that they've been presented to us and to accept them, the monies.
Any new obligations?
No new obligations, no. The ready-to-learn grant though, does focus on a lot of early education and because of its coming out a little bit later, we were not able to, you know, come to the board or to present that, you know, we could use that money to help off say, or to promote full-day kindergarten again. That's something that we would be bringing towards or forward for the next year though, if the same monies would be there, we would like to have that discussion.
Are we, are we missing out on any funds here?
No, no, this is what, there's a formula and they tell us how much we're getting.
And that's substantially lower than the, the year before, right? And I see we're getting six hundred thousand.
No.
And what was called the ABG grant, right?
No, we only received a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars when it was the ABG grant.
The original ready-to-learn grant.
Was going to be higher.
When the preliminary budget came out was six hundred. And then they cut it in half.
But this is twice as much as what we were receiving with the accountability block grant.
Okay. I had a question about the, the River Rock contract. So the, the contract is for disruptive children and it's clearly defined. And what I'm not saying is what do they do, what happens to our children if River Rock doesn't mediate them, remediate them? Is there a place they go after River Rock if they're not?
They would, they would continue at River Rock before they would be returned back to the school. And much of the students, the students are pretty successful in the program there, to be honest with you. Their, their attendance is good, better. They don't have, that's, that's one of the big things. The reasons that we have different students there are for a number of disciplinary, disciplinary reasons, not necessarily, you know, because they weren't academically doing okay, there was something else that got in their way. But if they really bottomed out, if we were looking at a student who might have an IEP, then we would be looking for a different placement that, you know, might be able to concentrate on mental health provisions, et cetera.
Okay.
But for the most part, what they do is they, they really work hard to try to return the students back to the building. And many of them that we have placed there in the recent month, there is a provision there that we want to get them back into the building, you know, at, at the next semester for, for the second half of the year, if they're meeting all of the criteria. They're attending, their grades are up, they're doing their work, et cetera.
Good. And this, I know we've done business with them before, even though they weren't at that, our location in our district. So is it safe to assume that the contract is pretty much the same as it was that we had with them?
Yes.
When we sent our kids to whatever Red Lion or Y missing they got?
Well, it was over in Singing Spring, but, yes.
So it was in wording? Now, just one, one question.
Just excuse me one second, the, the purpose of this is, we still have basically the same contract with, with River Rock?
Right.
It's just that there's some changes in, in the cost.
What they, what they were do, what the reason for the purpose, or the purpose of me having this on the agenda is to show you that River Rock is giving us the lowest rate of attendance that they charge because, well, they, they give, they, they try to get people, they try to get districts to buy seats. I told him, absolutely not, I'm not buying seats. I'm, I'm committed to you, we're, you know, working hand in hand. And because of the number of students that we have, the, the rapport that we have between our district and River Rock, they wanted me to be guaranteed the lowest rate without me buying seats in advance. So every student that we place there that doesn't get a free placement, we get the lowest rate that's charged to any school district.
Okay.
That's the change?
Yes.
I didn't get a chance to read it.
Yes, that's, that's the change. It's just, it's just showing you that we're getting the lowest daily rate that there is without having to buy seats in advance. Like a lot of school districts are buying and paying upfront for fifteen seats. I told him I wasn't doing that. I said, I, I have a commitment to, to sending our students to River Rock because you have a good program. If you're meeting the needs of the student that needs to go there, then I'm gonna send them there. I don't wanna, I don't want to buy seats, but you should still give me the good rate. And so he agreed.
But then this is how they've been charging us, this is just formalizing.
Right. It's just formalizing it because I wanted it for you to see, for you to vote, to vote on and so that it's adopted by us.
The contract goes from April to April, but it's November, is that?
It, it, it's more or less just, you know, kind of worked through because I wasn't buying seats, but I wanted him to tell me that I had the rates and so he.
Okay, so we're just.
We just got something in.
And what about their lunch? Because there is no lunch served there.
There's lunch, they do get lunch served there. We're, we're satelliting it from Amity and students who are free and/or reduced get a free reduced lunch. Those students who need to pay, pay, and then it's all going through our.
We deliver?
No, they pick it up. They have their own, they have their own van, they go over to AEC, bring it over.
Okay.
What is the term of the contract?
Um.
Does it say on there?
It's one year.
And.
One year started as of April 2014?
Yes, yes.
Through April 2015?
I don't.
You originally started in November.
Right, it was, it was a year ago before, because we, they were not in there for, for a year.
Not to be confused with the rental agreement.
No, I know, the lease is separate.
These are year to year, I'm sorry, this is year to year.
Duration twenty-five, fifteen, a hundred.
Right. It's one year.
And usually sign them in April?
Um.
When's the time you normally sign?
Typically, they would be signed sometime after July 1, whenever we would start putting students in, whenever we would make an agreement with them.
Why wouldn't we, I was just gonna say, why wouldn't you extend, why wouldn't you extend the, the ending date on that till June 30th or July, whatever it is, just so that, we're not sitting around in April discussing this.
That's, no, that's definitely, that should be extended until the end of this school year.
Okay, so that's another change.
Twenty-second is September.
Yes.
Twenty-June.
Right, yes.
It's supposed to be September, September to September.
Right, yes. So we're good for the whole year.
September, September 2014, okay, that's consistent then.
But do we want to tie, Mr. Small suggested maybe we want to change those dates so it's more in correlation with when the students actually.
And we can.
Just in June, start one from July 1 through June 30?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can do that, no problem. But they're growing, they're doing well. The students have been doing odds and end jobs around the buildings for, around our building for us. Sandy's really good about getting them to come over and take trash or anything that needs to be moved. Each time that the board room has to be set up or broken down, she has the, the kids doing it and they're, they're willing.
And that's because they get community service.
And because it gets them out of their routine, it gets them to move around, it gets them to socialize with the administration to some degree, they're, they're building rapport with us, they're, and she buys them donuts. Those tables are heavy.
Mrs. Torja, I have a quick question. The food service, is that for the Daniel Boone students, for all River Rock students?
It's all of them, it's all of them.
And it's paid for?
Through individual accounts, nope, student accounts.
Oh, okay, so there, okay, so the students are paid for it. Now, free or reduced, that goes through our district?
It goes, it runs through our program.
They're, they're another site.
Right.
Okay, all right. And we don't take any type of pay financially from?
No.
Great, we might even get a benefit from it.
Okay, the contract says very clearly, River Rock Academy Incorporated shall not provide any food service under requirements of the appendix III of the 2013-15. They're not providing.
Yeah, they're not providing it, we are.
Kids provide, yeah, I thought they were bringing their own lunches.
The work for kids who enrolled from another school.
No, 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 we're not paying for them, we're just providing the service for them to be able to tie into and purchase.
They pay through, they're.
One hundred percent funded.
Okay.
Yep, there's nothing, they just don't have like a kitchen.
They don't have a kitchen.
Right, right.
So they bring the meals to the place and then, but they're buying those meals from us.
Make some money on it?
Correct.